Thank you all that you could gather tonight.
Brother Jaya Prakash, brother Jaya, I am honored to be here.
The last time I was with you, it was a few months back and it was a wonderful opportunity to celebrate the Lord's goodness together with you.
I have been praying for a long time, I have been praying for a long time, I have been praying for a long time.
And you know what, there is a certain blessing of course each time we all gather this way. But I think we all are seeing a certain desperation to gather this way, seeing that God is at hand.
We have been praying for a long time, I have been praying for a long time, I have been praying for a long time.
I'm pretty sure, you know, looking at the pandemic and the way the virus is going around the world, you all would be wondering how far is the Lord away from us?
This time, what is it?
Take saints and the judgment seat of Christ.
We will not be forced to do this.
And you know what? The book, the Bible ends with these thoughts, that time is at hand. It, it ends with that somber note which should warn us.
This is not a good thing. The Bible is not written like this. This is not a good thing.
But it is also an encouragement to our souls.
This is not a good thing.
So I have divided sets of things that the scripture expects us to do, knowing that the day of Christ is at hand.
If we are in the same mood, we should not do anything. We should not do anything.
There are things that we should do manward and there are things that we should do Godward, knowing the day of Christ is soon upon us.
If we are in the same mood, we should not do anything. We should not do anything.
So we now going to read where there is which gives man's and there is some signal problem, I am not getting your voice clearly. So now we can read some script. The thing we need to do manward and things that we need to do Godward.
If we do something, we should not do anything. If we do something, we should not do anything.
Revelation chapter one, verse three.
In the Lord's name, we will pray.
Blessed is he that readeth and they that hear the words of this prophecy, and keep those things which are written therein, for the time is at hand.
This is not a good thing. This is not a good thing. This is not a good thing.
So the first thing we have to do, knowing day of Christ is at hand, is to read the scripture, hear the scripture, and to keep the scripture.
If we are in the same mood, we should not do anything. We should not do anything. We should not do anything.
So the first thing we want to understand, knowing day of Christ is there, is we have to spend time with the Bible, with the word of God.
If we are in the same mood, we should not do anything.
I am sure you know the story of the wonderful man of God, William Carey.
I have heard about him. I have heard about William Carey.
And this man of God, he took this verse literally and he said, "Oh, the scripture says there is a blessing in reading the word of God and in keeping the words thereof."
If we are in the same mood, we should not do anything. This is not a good thing. This is not a good thing.
And so every three months, he read the book of Revelation entirely, every three months.
Every three months.
But for us, the word of prophecy is the entire book of Bible. And so we would do well to take an interest in the whole book of Bible.
If we are in the same mood, we should not do anything. If we are in the same mood, we should not do anything.
Did you notice the second part of the scripture? The first thing we need to do with the scripture is read it. The second part of the scripture is hear it.
If we do something, we should not do anything. This is not a good thing.
And you know, this is not no ordinary hearing of the scripture. These days, we have come into a habit of listening to podcasts. We have come into a habit of listening to sermons on YouTube and all of that. That's not what the scripture is talking about.
If we do something, we should not do anything. If we broadcast something, we should not do it. If we do something, we should not do it.
This is the public hearing and the reading of scripture in the assembly of God's people.
If we are in the same mood, we should not do anything.
There is a significant blessing brethren, that we would read the scripture aloud in the meeting and hear it quite pridefully.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
And the third thing, of course, is quite important. Keep those things which are written therein. We must not only be listeners, but we should be doers of the word of God.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
So these things are literally Godward. How we deal with the word of God is Godward.
If we do something, we should not do anything. This is not a good thing.
Okay, then we read First Peter, chapter four, verse seven.
In the fourth chapter, we will pray.
"But the end of all things is at hand; be therefore sober and watch unto prayer."
If we are in the same mood, we should not do anything. If we are in the same mood, we should not do anything.
And these things are again unto God, Godward things. Two things we are encouraged here. We should be sober, that is of sound mind, and we should watch unto prayer.
If we do something, we should not do anything. If we do something, we should not do anything.
Do you know what a sound mind means?
If we are in the same mood, we should not do anything.
That means you would not entertain any wrong thoughts.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
You would not entertain any negative thoughts.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
You will not speak or think evil of anyone around, even if it is a very difficult to love brother or sister.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
So the definition of sound mind, in some ways, is found in the letter to Philippians.
If we are in the same mood, we should not do anything.
And you, you will know well, in Philippians, chapter four, verse eight.
In the fourth chapter, we will pray.
Finally, brethren, whatever things are true, whatever things are honest, whatever things are just, whatever things are pure, whatever things are lovely, whatever things are of good report, if there be any virtue in them, if there be any praise, think on these things.
If we do something, we should not do anything. If we do something, we should not do anything. If we do something, we should not do anything. If we do something, we should not do anything.
And you see, that is what is called sound mind.
This is not a good thing.
And so we need to have that kind of an attitude. We will not entertain any wrong or negative thoughts about anybody that belongs to God, but we will focus on good things.
If we do something, we should not do anything. If we do something, we should not do anything.
And the next thing we are asked to do is watch unto prayer.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
And how long will we watch in prayer?
If we do something, we should not do anything.
And what shall we watch for in prayer?
If we do something, we should not do anything.
We have to keep watch, but I've asked myself this question. What am I going to keep watch for in prayer?
If we do something, we should not do anything.
To hear the voice of God.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
You remember Elijah's story?
If we do something, we should not do anything.
First Kings, chapter nineteen.
In the fourth chapter, we will pray.
There was an earthquake, but there was no God in it.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
There was fire, but there was no God in it.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
There was a storm, but there was no God in it.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
But there was God in that still small voice.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Dear child of God, we need to practice paying time in prayer until we can hear the still small voice of God.
If we are in the same mood, we should not do anything. If we do something, we should not do anything.
So when you and I start to pray, and if our heart is not comforted yet, don't stop praying. Keep praying until you are comforted in your spirit and you have the peace of God in your heart.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
And you know, that's what Satan wants. He wants us to just make a checkbox query, you know, like, like a tick box. Did I pray today? Tick, that's it, end of story. But that's not what the scripture wants from us.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
We are to watch unto prayer as long as it takes until we hear the voice of God.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
So the first thing we need to do, knowing the day of Christ is at hand, is spend time with the word of God.
If we are in the same mood, we should not do anything.
And the second thing we need to do is we need to practice sound mind.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
And the third thing we need to do is watch unto prayer.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Let us go further. Let us then go into Philippians, chapter four, verse five.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
And this is a beautiful, beautiful chapter. And the verse we are reading here contains the following. It says, "Let your moderation be known unto all men; the Lord is at hand."
This is not a good thing. If we are in the same mood, we should not do anything.
So this is manured. When we know day of Christ is coming, these are the things we need to do towards each other.
If we are in the same mood, we should not do anything.
The Greek word here for moderation is eikis.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
And it has got a beautiful meaning, which simply means we should show our gentleness and we should show our patience.
If we do something, we should not do anything. If we do something, we should not do anything.
Oh, that's a challenge, dear brother and dear sister.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
How easy it is for me to lose my patience about this brother or that sister, who I am not very happy about.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
It's very hard. How can I be patient about this person who doesn't want to change?
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Let your moderation be known unto all men.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
So it is one thing to be a patient and gentle person, but it is another thing for other people to say that about you.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Do you know, for a long time, I had a problem. I thought I was good enough.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
But it has no meaning until some other person tells you that.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Do you remember that wonderful testimony of our brother Gaius in Second John?
In the fourth chapter, we will pray.
He had a wonderful report from all churches.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Let your good behavior be known to all men, not just to yourself or to your family.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
And that's what Christ wants, that you are known for being a gentle person and a patient person.
If we do something, we should not do anything. If we do something, we should not do anything. If we do something, we should not do anything.
And then let us look at another verse, which talks about more manward attributes.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Let us look at Romans, chapter thirteen and verse twelve.
In the fourth chapter, we will pray.
And I'm going to read to you from the authorized text again. "The night is far spent; the day is at hand. Let us therefore cast off the works of darkness, and let us put on the armor of light."
In the fourth chapter, we will pray. If we do something, we should not do anything.
The night is far spent.
In the fourth chapter, we will pray.
The day break is very soon upon us.
In the fourth chapter, we will pray.
The Lord is coming on our cloudless morning.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
What should our attitude be?
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Cast off the works of darkness.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Works of darkness.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Lying.
For example?
Lying, envy, jealousy.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Murmurs, disputings.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Rebellions.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Dishonoring the overseers.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Not loving your brothers and your sisters.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Using the lust of your eyes and the pride of life to rule your lives.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Anger, short temper.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Dear friends, pride is such a big problem. And I tell you what, we all have a certain level of pride. We all feel like this is my right.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
But you know what the Lord says? Knowing that the day of Christ is at hand, we must cast off works of darkness.
If we are in the same mood, we should not do anything.
You know, cast off is a very strong word.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
That is the same word used concerning the evil people who will be put into hell.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
That means we should have nothing to do with it. It should be completely thrown away into the hellfire.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Some of us enjoy making very crude jokes.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Some of us are not good stewards with money matters.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Some of us are not reliable with the work of God.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Some of us are not very, very reliable with fellow brethren.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
And that's a tragedy.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
But let us be encouraged tonight, dear brethren, to cast off the works of darkness.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
But that is not all. We are now encouraged to put on the armor of light.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
So in the darkness, what is, what is seen is evil, but in light, what is seen is righteousness.
If we do something, we should not do anything. If we do something, we should not do anything.
Righteousness.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
And so the meaning of this beautiful phrase, "Let us put on the armor of light", simply means, instead of having works of darkness, we need to show works of righteousness.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Let us look at Ephesians, chapter two, for a second.
In the fourth chapter, we will pray.
From verse one.
In the fourth chapter, we will pray.
"And you, as he quickened, who were dead in trespasses and sins, therein time passed, he walked according to the course of this world, according to the prince of the power of the air, the spirit that now worketh in the children of disobedience."
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Next verse.
If we do something, we should not do anything. If we do something, we should not do anything.
That is how we were. We were doing works of disobedience.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
But now we need to move to verse ten in the same chapter.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
"For we are his workmanship, created in Christ Jesus, unto good works, which God has before ordained, that we should walk in them."
If we do something, we should not do anything.
You see, right now, being those who have been bought by the blood of the Lamb, we have to do good works unto Jesus Christ.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
And we are, we are encouraged in First Corinthians, chapter fifteen, of the same thing. Let us look at the last verse in First Corinthians fifteen. It says there. "Therefore, my beloved brethren, be steadfast, unmovable, always abounding in the work of the Lord."
If we do something, we should not do anything. If we do something, we should not do anything.
All the work that we do unto the Lord and unto his people, the works of righteousness.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
And dear child of God, tonight, these are simple instructions, but can I just encourage you? With the day of Christ coming, there are things we must do Godward and there are things we must do manward.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Godward, we need to spend more time with the scripture, reading it, hearing it, and doing it.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Godward, we must actively practice sound mind and be watchful in prayer.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
And manward, we must have our gentleness and patience be known to all men.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
And manward, we should cast off all works of darkness and put on the works of righteousness.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
But you know, as much as there is an encouragement for the believer, there is a warning for the non-believer.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Let us look through Mark, chapter one, verse fifteen.
In the fourth chapter, we will pray.
And the Lord himself is the focus of this verse.
In the fourth chapter, we will pray.
And look at this verse. "And saying, 'The time is fulfilled, and the kingdom of God is at hand; repent ye and believe the gospel.'"
If we do something, we should not do anything.
And the subject here is the day of the Lord.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
This is not day of Christ.
This is not Christ's day.
Only the believer has the hope and the blessed enjoyment of day of Christ.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
If you are an unbeliever, I am afraid, day of Christ has got no relevance for you. What is relevant for you is only the day of the Lord.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
That is a day of judgment.
That is the day of judgment.
And the word of God says that kingdom of God, which the day of judgment is at hand.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Repent and believe the gospel.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Do you know, dear friend, tonight, if you don't know who Jesus Christ is, if you don't take him as your savior tonight, it may be well too late.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Because the word of God says, day of Christ may happen any moment right now.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
Christ may come right now and take Christians that believe in him to be with him away from this world.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
And those who are left on this earth will go through judgment.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
And that judgment is not a kind one.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
This is a judgment unto destruction of human pride.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
All sin that has not been washed by the blood of Jesus Christ will be cast into hell.
If we do something, we should not do anything.
You might think this is just hear and say.
If you do something, you should not do it.
But you know, the scripture, the Bible, is the word of God and it shall never be void. But you know, the scripture, the Bible is the word of God and it shall never be void. Bible is the only book which is a complete inspiration from God himself and has never changed over six thousand years of its existence. And even though we have got so many translations, the theme of the entire Bible is only one thing, Christ. The word of God, unchangeable, untarnished word of God says, today if you believe, you shall be saved. And then it would be the day of salvation. So you can make tonight your day of salvation and avoid the day of the Lord. And then you know what? You will have the blessed hope of the day of Christ. And if you have any question tonight, I'm sure there are so many well-meaning brothers and sisters in this gathering tonight who can guide you. But the rest of us, those who have already been bought by the blood of Lamb, dear Christian brethren, sisters and brothers, be encouraged, the day of Christ is at hand. Let us do things which are for God. Let us do things which are unto men. There is no need to be sidetracked by Corona. Christ is mightier than Corona. And may the Lord and his blessings and his presence be with you all at all times. I'm going to close with a word of prayer before we open up for further chat. Our gracious God, we want to thank you for the opportunity we have to come into your presence. Forgive us, our God of Father. We do not understand what is the right way to behave. But tonight we just thank you that the scripture is very clear, knowing that the day of Christ is at hand. What shall our attitude be? Help us to realize these things and apply these truths to our hearts. We think of that one soul tonight who does not know Christ as her savior. Speak to them with your still small voice and let them know that you love them unto the end of eternity. In the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, brothers. And I trust this has been some encouragement.
Yes, brother. Thank you very much. We are very much encouraged and exhausted to prepare for the Lord's coming. And we are very much blessed by the word of God. Thank you very much, brother.
Thank you, brother.
Even though it's late, even though it's very late at your place, but still, still you could give some time to spend with us. Thank you very much.
It's always a privilege.
Thank you very much.
If anybody has got some doubt, questions, they can ask.
Yes, yes. Brother, you are in which, which faculty?
So brother, I'm, I'm trained in cardiac intensive care.
If anyone is, brother, one, one brother in our assembly, he wants to take vaccine. But he underwent bypass surgery. So whether he should take the vaccine or not?
Absolutely take it. Absolutely take it. There's no problem.
He's taking this blood thinner tablets.
Well, that means he will be even more secure.
Okay, that's right. Got again, questions to Targat Shmer.
I'm more than happy to take your written questions later on through WhatsApp also, brother. Don't worry. And if anyone has any medical queries, I'll be more than glad to guide them through these processes.
Brother, I have one question, whether we can, can we take the Indian vaccines, whether COVID shield or COVAXIN?
Yeah, COVID shield is the same as the Oxford AstraZeneca vaccine and that is the one that the world over is the highest used vaccine. You will have no problem taking COVID shield. COVAXIN is locally produced from Hyderabad. It's a very good vaccine actually. We don't have as huge trials with COVAXIN as much as COVID shield. But from what I understand from the scientific community, I would have no concerns with it. Please go ahead and take it. But if you're going to take COVAXIN to travel abroad, the international regulations don't recognize it for that purpose. But if you're going to stay within India, COVAXIN is okay. But if you intend to travel abroad, it won't be sufficient.
So, thank you, brother. COVID shield is okay if you want to travel to abroad.
It's very good. Yeah, absolutely okay with all borders.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Brother, regarding the third wave, so the people are very worried about the third wave. So what do you say about that?
Look, it is inevitable, dear brother. Unfortunately, the way the system is run in India, you know, people are not given enough chance to prepare for these things. It's a bit sad. I think third wave is a reality. It will happen. But the maximum protection that you can get, you should take it. So those who are vaccinated will be protected from any kind of death, hospital illness or even mild illness for the most part. And if we have at least sixty percent to seventy percent of Indian population vaccinated, third wave will have very less impact. It will happen, but impact can be reduced.
Then what would be the, I recently completed my, you know, I was positive. So then I cured, then when can we?
If you're positive, you need to wait two months to take the vaccine, brother.
So in that meantime, there's no issue, right?
Yeah, you'll be fine. We expect the immunity that you've gotten to last you for two minutes, two months. You can take it as soon as six weeks, but we say eight weeks is good.
Okay, thank you, brother.
You're welcome.
Brother, one last question. Biblically or maybe medically or maybe climate changes or virus behavior, how long we can expect this pandemic to continue and?
Brother, if I had, if I had access to the mind of God, I'll tell you better. But, but the, the fact is, you and I know that, funnily, we don't have any control over this particular virus. And we are all preparing for this virus to never go away. It will be there in some form or fashion. It will become like the flu, which will come every year and go. That's what we anticipate, which is why annually we'll have to vaccinate against this one also.
Okay, thank you, brother.
You're welcome.
Brother, one more question. How long this vaccine will work?
So we expect the vaccine-related immunity to last at least six to nine months. And most vaccine providers are bringing out boosters next year. So whatever you take right now, it will take you to the end of the year and next year you'll have a booster. Having said that, some people amongst us will have a longer immunity and some people much shorter immunity.
Yeah. Recently I had a false fever. After three months only I took the vaccine, COVID shield. So when should I take the second dose?
You can take it within eight weeks, brother.
But some people say second dose is not required if those who have gone through.
Go for it. Go for it. Take it. Take it. You can take it between eight to, eight to twelve weeks. But yeah, if, if you, if you want to wait for twelve weeks, it's even better.
Brother, then what? Tell me about the what fungus, you know, the black fungus. There are many fungus that are happening. So.
See, that is a peculiar problem we are seeing only in India.